The people of our county, uh, this COVID situation, Lord, is growing. And we pray for our county and for our, those that are sick and those that have caught it. Pray for our medical staff, Lord, but they're swamped and they're slammed. So we pray for the hospital and those people as well, and our doctors. That we'll, uh, listen, God, and that we'll, uh, make wise decisions for what you'd have us do. We thank you for everything you've done for us and forgive us, Lord, for every failure every day. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I move to adopt the agenda, um, I want to take up a few minutes just to, um, express some words of apology, um, to the community and also to, uh, Dr. Kelly. And the reason I want to take up this opportunity to do this because there are a lot of, a lot of information that's out there. Um, but I want to clear up some points here, um, that the decisions for the information that was received by community members and parents through our Kempo, Kempo system that had a mask mandate printed on it, um, was a decision, um, that the board also was aware of, um, and actually had conversations about wanting to, um, have a mask mandate. And through a series of meetings and, and conversations with, uh, other leaders, um, other, uh, organizations as to what was going to happen, um, receiving, uh, several emails from health officials and also an order that was passed out, um, through our circuit, um, our chief judge, um, the conversation began to, uh, move to have a superintendent to do a little more. And it wasn't until we figured out that the procedure for that was that we actually had to go back and, um, make, uh, take official action because we took official action to eliminate it. And so I want to clear, clarify that as board members, we're responsible for policing ourselves. The only person that, um, has the authority to hold board members, um, to their policy and procedures would be the governor. And if we had an issue that was detrimental to the system, um, he does have the authority to remove us. But we're responsible through the code of ethics and through our board code of ethics. We're responsible for holding ourselves accountable. Um, and you know, that, that point that we raised on last Friday at the call meeting was an act of not, um, holding the superintendent accountable, it was holding the board accountable. Um, so I want to make sure that we clarify that. And, uh, Dr. Kelly, I want to offer apologies on behalf of the board, um, to you. And I want to offer apologies to this community on behalf of the board. As the chair, my role is to make sure that the board is standing guidelines and, um, leading the board is my responsibility. And so I take full responsibility for not catching that before that paperwork went out. Um, because between myself and Dr. Kelly and Coach McDavid, who serves as the vice chair, that's our roles. And, um, that paperwork should have not went out to the community without official action. And so, Dr. Kelly, again, we offer apologies to you and we offer apologies to this community for not moving through procedures, um, the correct way. If anybody else has anything they want to say, um, certainly.
I want to follow up. Chairman Ellis, sir. Sir, we're running a, a, work behind the scenes. Uh, and we made the 25th meeting. I think we realized that Dr. Kelly had made one recommendation that we sort of don't made a motion. So all we're saying is we're trying to be transparent. We've made a mistake. We're not afraid to admit our mistakes. So, thank you.
Yeah. I certainly don't want the community to think Dr. Kelly did something behind our back, that's for sure. He, he made us aware of everything he was looking at, so.
And I think I basically said that on Friday, um, that, you know, that was part of what he was doing was to make us aware of things that are going on, especially, you know, when we were dealing with infectious disease policy. That's basically what I was saying. He was making us aware of the procedures then that he was, you know, a plan he put in place. And, um, so like I said, uh, no, we were not trying to do anything definitely, uh, behind anybody's back or anything like that. Like I said, he was making us aware of what his plans were and, uh, I guess wanted to see, you know, what our, our thoughts may have been, but, um, I will reiterate that we did not have a quote unquote meeting about, uh, putting in a mask mandate. That is not, uh, basically what had happened. Um, this would probably be the time, uh, for me to say what I really need to say, um, to the community. Uh, of course, I have no malice. You know, I, I often say I am Wayne County because we are Wayne County. But, um, I just want everybody to understand that there are those in our community that have actually had some tough times. Um, sometimes it's difficult for you, you know, we always talk about you can walk a mile in a man's shoes. Sometimes it's difficult to do that. And it's something, especially in a polarized world that we live in today. But I, um, want to, we, I guess want to say, we've had members of our staff have, you know, COVID, but we've also lost, uh, members of our staff. And so that's, that's real close to home. And I'm just one of those beings that I'm wired that I don't forget those kind of things. That, you know, um, and I want to read this letter. I was going to wait until the end of my comments, but it goes into, goes in with this. It is from one of our former, uh, retired teachers who is concerned about this. And this is where I'm going with that. You have to realize that there are people who have actually lived this nightmare. Says, "I'm a retired teacher after 30 years of teaching in Wayne County. My husband is still a teacher and also drives a bus. By not enforcing the mask mandate, you are taking away everyone's best chance of staying safe from the virus." This is her opinion. "As I watched the Friday call meet, board meeting, I was astonished listening to all the reasons not to wear a mask and I was appalled by the behavior of some of the people in the audience. None of them are following science or what the experts are recommending. The new Delta variant is much more contagious than the original virus and there are now many medical and scientific studies that show masks are proven way to help slow, uh, the spread of the awful virus. I heard people say only a small percentage of people die from the virus, but that small percentage was someone's love. Shame on y'all for downplaying people's pain and suffering. My siblings and I suffered a 33% loss until you have had to tell a loved one goodbye on FaceTime while they are on a ventilator because they can't breathe from COVID pneumonia. You will not understand the severity of this virus. I had to do just that with my brother. I didn't even get to tell my sister goodbye. I'm just grateful I was able to talk to her on the phone a, a few days before she died. I'm very disappointed in the board's decision not to mandate masks with the huge increase in cases in Wayne County. There's a federal mandate for masks on buses and you aren't even requiring them on school buses. I plead with you to take the steps necessary to provide everyone in school system, in the school system with a safe learning environment and require masks as recommended by the experts. I don't want anyone to have to go through the pain and suffering my family has endured. What is going to happen when there aren't enough teachers or bus drivers because they are sick from the virus? I know of two school systems in Georgia that have already had to go virtual, Glasscock County and Teleferro County. Do the parents of Wayne County want that to happen here? Thank you for your time and consideration. Jeanette Ratliff-Filmor.
Mr. Ellis, Dr. Kelly, uh, I would like to apologize for putting him in a compromising position. Uh, and to the, to the people of Wayne County, uh, I would like to apologize for Friday morning during the, uh, during our special call meeting, I got confused on an issue, uh, that was called two events. And, uh, I wasn't confused from being inattentive, uh, and I don't think I was the only one in the room that was confused, but, uh, this is a Wayne County better than that. And I apologize for casting my vote in a manner that I wasn't sure what I was doing. So please accept my humble apology in that regard. Uh, and, uh, I'm just hopeful and very prayerful that things will go good in our schools and, uh, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ripken.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 20th and the July 27th call meeting.
Some move.
Some.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ripken.
Yes, ma'am.
Public participation? Items of business, discussion, information, code of conduct.
Uh, thank you, board.
It, it goes off if we don't use it. I've already, so that's that white button.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Appreciate, uh, thank you very much. Um, just real briefly, uh, about COVID update, just wanted to kind of, you know, obviously we are experiencing the same things that, that local systems and, and any other entities, you know, government agencies, all those are experiencing, you know, numbers increasing. We're monitoring those daily. Uh, our director of school nursing is monitoring those daily, working with, with DPHs. And, uh, we'll continue to follow our protocols, uh, as they are written and, uh, mitigate this, uh, issue as, you know, as we can. Uh, if there are issues that come up, uh, with regard to, uh, staff and students and, you know, the board will be the first ones to know. We'll notify anyone that needs to be made aware of, you know, keep a follow those protocols as, um, as they are written.
Hey, Dr., you're good. I think you have just done a thing.
All right. Doc, um, I know that we've just had some questions and concerns since we are not doing a, uh, a mask mandate. Um, a lot of concerns were how we want to be, uh, quarantine protocols and making sure that parents continually to, uh, know that they need to monitor their kids in the morning. Um, I know that, you know, we utilized that Kempo system pretty good last year and, uh, I just think that we, for a while, we need to send out some daily reminders, uh, from the district, not just the individual school, but I think the district to remind people that they need to be checking their kids' temperatures, they need to be monitoring their kids, because we do have them coming back into, uh, a mass gathering, um, of, of people in, in individual comment areas and classrooms. Um, there is a, there is the potential for, um, a, a mass spread. And I think some of that can be mitigated if people were, would pay attention to their kids in their home. Um, and, and even, you know, if our, our staff is not feeling good, we need to be looking at, um, ways to be able to accommodate them from, you know, to, you know, as they can't make the school and shut down their school if they are experiencing those situations. So those were some concerns that was, that was mentioned. I too have a concern about that. Um, you know, one of the reasons last year I supported, you know, having a mask mandate was because it really worked through a lot of mitigating factors to keep schools from shutting down. But since we're not, you know, we voted to, voted to take that out, we're not operating under a mask mandate, we do got to look at, you know, some serious, um, quarantine protocols, um, to keep, um, it becoming, from becoming an issue. It's going to be an issue that there is, but to keep it from becoming a, a total shutdown of a school or possibly our system. Uh, yes, sir. I mean, we will obviously, uh, we'll start doing that, um, tomorrow, send out reminders to parents, um, to monitor.
The white does that.
To monitor their students and, uh, ask them, uh, to their students to, um, to, you know, to school. Currently, um, you know, um, we are not, uh, mandating, uh, mask quarantines in schools. Uh, whenever there is a positive case, our director of school nursing has a process by which people will need to be notified, will be notified, something will be sent through Kempo as well, I believe. Um, and we will deal with those cases as they arise and send them with employees. They're, you know, they're required to let their administrators know, uh, if they have issues and we will work with them and, and guide them, uh, based on, you know, CDC recommendations, DPH recommendations as required.
It's crazy.
So, um, and, you know, we are continuously, continuously advising our administrators on how to advise, uh, their employees.
Dr. Kelly, a, uh, chairman analysis, if I may. Would it be prudent, uh, and fellow board members, if we implemented a, uh, something on our website such as a scoreboard that lets the community, you know, if we come to the board meetings and you keep us, you keep us board members informed daily if we have issues, would it be wise or would it be a good idea to implement, if you will, a scorecard that's on our webpage that lets parents know, uh, if we have positives, if we have quarantine issues? Uh, personally, I think the more information that we share, it would make any subsequent decisions maybe we have to make in the future maybe more understandable if we put that information out for public consumption.
Would that come under the COVID protocol thing that you're working on?
Um, it is currently not listed in the, in the protocols as how that information, uh, you know, will be published. So, uh, if it is, you know, the board's recommendation that we do that, I don't think you need to take official action and we'll post it, but if it's a, you know, a recommendation that you have, you just need to direct me in to develop a program and work with Dr. Burgess and focus on our website.
My, my fellow board members, I, I thought about it. I can't see any negatives now. That doesn't mean there's not any negatives. How do y'all feel about it?
I think it gives our parents something to look at ahead of time.
Now, because we, we did that last year. We had that on our website. Each week we have made a, uh, COVID page and, uh, send from media and let everybody know. Might be something we're going to look at, re-implement.
I think what, uh, I think what you're probably also talking about is lack of rubric, more or less, to make a determination of if we're in, um, the green, the yellow, the red zone or something like that. Um, is that, is that what you're kind of talking about?
Well, you know, we make a piggyback on that and, uh, put, put in place parameters as the situation worsens. But right now, I was just focusing on a, a sharing of information with our stakeholders.
Yeah, they, they did have that on the website last year where, uh, gave a, a weekly, if I'm not mistaken, weekly update on the number, COVID numbers.
Is that something we have to adopt again, Nick? We had it last year, but that whole situation was different.
No. So how that works is it is, as long as we don't take official action not to do something, the superintendent's scope of procedures can go.
Okay.
He just, and he just can't make a procedure that's against something that we've taken action on or there are a policy. So he has a, the, the.
That was just a procedure that they implemented last year, right, Dr. Burgess?
Yes, correct.
We can do that.
Thank you. Awesome.
I apologize.
It may be the better.
All right. So, Neil, uh, please, the board, just want to kind of give you a point of, of information. Um, and it's not something you have to consider now, but it's just a momentary way to start talking about is, you know, we have a desire to explore, uh, putting the, uh, handbook. The handbook is already on the website for students and for teachers, personnel, so on and so forth. So we, uh, would like to move, uh, almost, uh, completely to, uh, a digital handbook next year. So we would not provide a hard copy of the handbook to every person in the system. We would certainly, uh, print, uh, handbooks and have those available for anybody who wishes to have a, a hard copy. Um, but, uh, many systems around us, you know, don't offer print hard copies for every student. So we could virtually go from 5200 or, you know, 5500 handbooks down, you know, to, uh, maybe 300 or 400 and, you know, obviously make people where it is, where it is, what it is. They'll still be responsible for information, but, uh, most people don't keep those, uh, handbooks, especially when it's successful on the website. So just, that's just a point of information for right now. And you don't have any, if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, well, they just have to move along and, uh, we'll move on that maybe, uh, sometime towards the end of the school year. Also, uh, just want to remind you that our, our board retreat will be, uh, Thursday, September 9th, beginning at eight o'clock. We're building the, uh, protocols for that. Uh, but that's just a reminder that we'll have that and it's basically designed for, uh, your informational purposes, for your, um, professional learning purposes, if you so desire, but also to have our departments and our schools report out about what's going on in the school system so that we'll make you aware of current happens.
We're going to have that right here.
Yes, sir. It is planned to be in the text area, yes, sir. Strategic plan, uh, is be, is beginning. Um, we have not scheduled any formal meetings or dates or anything, but just wanted you to know that, uh, I have reached out to our school board association. We are a member of the group school board association and we're going to explore having them assist us in the strategic planning process. I have more information for you, uh, as those conversations progress, but just want to let you know that, that kind of first initial contact we made, waiting to hear back from them with regarding some specifics about how we move forward with that process. So just letting you know, and bringing you updates for that. The, uh, Melba Murphy Award, um, it was, there was an interest expressed in maybe modifying the logistics of the Melba Murphy Award. We get four of those per, uh, per year, one in the summer, which was rather difficult at times. And so, uh, you know, with, um, the board's, uh, permission, I don't think they take action, but just wanted to make sure unless anyone has any issues, we're going to move to doing that three times a year, you know, during the school year. And we have already established the dates. We'll make sure that you are aware of, uh, you know, the, the approaching dates to, to provide that award so that you have opportunities for input on who you would want to select for the award. So basically, we're just revising the process going from four to three and, and have some specific dates listed so that, uh, we can be more efficient in making sure that you're aware of what that, when that award is to happen so that you can, uh, we can have all that done and, and be more efficient. Capital Outlay. All right. So, Jany Baker, uh, obviously you can see that, uh, they have, uh, done the footers for the pad. You can see that they poured footers for the pad. You can see rebar coming out of the ground where they're going to be ready to start doing additional site prep work, get it ready to label off or whatever it is that they're going to do, you know, to, to begin with that. Uh, the rough plumbing inside the annex and the prepaid building is done and has been poured back so that, you know, the process in there will begin to increase. Uh, the portals for the students, uh, were completed, set up, ready to go prior to the end of the week last week, so they were certainly ready by Monday. The fence that separates the trailers, uh, or the portals from the road has been installed, gate's been installed. So, uh, it's back like it was prior to, uh, the construction beginning so that, you know, we don't have, uh, any issues with having access to the road. So we have that in order. Uh, the bathroom trailer's been moved, uh, and it's been set up and it is functioning and ready to go, uh, so that they have, uh, those facilities out there. There was a meeting today, uh, with the designer for color scheme and, uh, you know, the aesthetics part of, of going inside carpet, wall cover, carpet, floor cover, different other variable floor covers, paint tile, all of those kind of things. So initial meeting was happening today with, uh, Mr. Ellis, the principal, Jamie Ellis. Um, he does have a committee that will be, uh, strategically involved in that and it will, you know, involve, uh, members of his staff and, and possibly other stakeholders, but I, I'm not exactly sure who is on this committee, but he does have a committee to take care of it. Um, there has been, there was meetings prior to school opening between school officials and TQ contractors, to make sure that traffic flow, not only with cars, but with students, was, uh, appropriate and, and Mr. Jamie Ellis was, uh, strategically involved in that as well. And, uh, I'm sure everybody knows we had a visit from the governor on the first day of school that went well. Mr. Jamie Ellis and his staff did an excellent job of organizing that and, uh, carrying that out and it was very successful as well. Uh, do you have any questions about Jamie Baker that I'd like to answer? All right. Uh, the track, I don't know if you've been by the track, but there is accident machinery movement at the track. They are digging ditches and they are within storms and the bike has arrived and they are working, uh, which is very exciting. I ride by there several times a day just to watch. Um, the electrician will be, uh, will be, uh, beginning this week to start running electrical outlets and, and things through the flat poles and all that kind of stuff. The well permits have been completed, so we will probably see them drilling the well at some point, hopefully in the very near future. Um, and the sports turf, who will be responsible for the actual track surfaces and, you know, organizing that is currently planning and mobilizing and so hopefully, you know, that will be ready to go when it's time. So track is back active, thank goodness, and so hopefully we'll continue to see that. Uh, if there's any questions about the track? Yes, ma'am.
Not the track itself, but the, uh, football area that we're trying to get the, how are we doing with that? Which football area, the practice field, are they going all right?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, that's the very next thing. It was a great segue into the practice fields. The sod is down. The sod has been rolled and, uh, we will probably do a little bit of top dressing just to kind of finish it up, uh, you know, where it needs to be. The goalposts are up, um, and we are, um, going to, uh, look at the weapons survey to see what we might be able to do with some different areas out by the practice field that we currently do not have the availability to, uh, disturb. So we will look at that and if there are opportunities there, then obviously that will be presented to the board and see how the board may want to proceed with any delineation or any opportunities in, in that area. Okay? Uh, softball, uh, soft offense is up. The windscreen is being installed. The infield is being installed and the dugouts are being expanded. Um, that is not really a project that we are, um, responsible for. You know, we provide assistance when asked. We provide, uh, counsel when asked. Uh, you know, obviously the board was gracious enough to, uh, assist in the funding of some of those projects. But that project, even though it is under our supervision, is primarily being, uh, done by, uh, you know, boosters and the coach. Um, and she is keeping me apprised and advised at all times about how things are going. Uh, we are making sure that things that need to be done, you know, contractors and those kind of things are being done the way that's supposed to. Uh, and that all, uh, any of the finances that's associated with the board or the school system is done with regard to the appropriate financing procedures that are required of us. And, uh, hopefully, you know, it's been a lot of rain, so that's impacted it, but hopefully it'll be done soon.
Dr. Kelly, so they practicing, playing at Bill Maher's?
Yes, sir. They're at the rep department, um, right now. Yes. And, uh, just a couple of other things, not capital outlay projects, but, uh, the board had expressed, uh, a desire to, uh, get to work on the awning at Scraven Elementary. So please know that that is also in the works. Uh, I'm in communication with, um, our main's director and, um, we'll be, uh, meeting out there and getting that, you know, those logistics started. And so, um, we'll have some information to the board with regard to that, hopefully at our next meeting. And then one other thing I didn't want to bring up to you is that, uh, it was my understanding that there is to be some fencing installed, uh, around the, the new practice fields, uh, to help prevent any vandalism and those kind of things. Uh, we have entered, um, we have, uh, secured some, uh, estimates and some proposals and, uh, we'll have that information available for you, um, at the next meeting, uh, hopefully, so we can get that taken care of. And that's all I have as far as capital outlay and, and the projects. Make a point? Yes, sir. The capital outlay committee, um, you know, the, the board has taken action to establish that. The capital outlay committee, um, you know, the board has taken action to establish that committee, committee. We are ready to move forward, uh, you know, from the office of superintendent. Um, from what I understand, Mr. Davidson's going to chair, correct? And, um, all we need is some guidance as far as the date, uh, that we want to meet and the location. Uh, so, you know, and, uh, so the chair and I have a conversation and we make that decision. Um, then we'll, you know, we'll get that instituted and ready to go.
Awesome.
Dr. Kelly, would it be okay if I scheduled the time to come by and spoke with you about this committee? And I would like for you to set the parameters and the groundwork at the beginning of this first, first meeting, if you wouldn't mind. But, uh, I'll reach out to you in the next few days and if you can spare a little time, I'll come and sit down with you.
Mr. Davidson, we serve a pleasure, so whenever you're ready, we're ready. Any other, any questions about capital outlay or capital outlay advisory committee?
Dr. Kelly, we'll comment on that, capital outlay advisory committee. Uh, as with any of our school board meetings, this is going to be open to the public.
Yes.
And we encourage stakeholders to be there and, uh, you know, hear the discussion and possibly even have input on the discussion. Please, uh, we'll put the day out plenty of time and we look forward to as many of you as can to be there.
I got just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I hadn't paid attention.
Okay.
Do we have a fence behind the mobile homes?
Yes, ma'am. We, we have, it was done prior to, uh, we, it was done before Friday of last week. So it is exactly as it was, just newer, shinier fence, uh, as, you know, prior to. So yes, kids cannot get to Sunset Boulevard unless they, unless they scale the fence.
Okay.
So it is there.
Thank you.
You said the same as it was, it actually extended on down behind the kitchen. So that's just what you're saying, they cannot get out it.
Yes, it, you're right, it actually goes all, all the way down to the, I think, all the way to the, uh, past the bathroom trailer, I think. And it has a gate down there at the end, so it's, so it's not exactly like what it is more. Anything else for capital outlay? Not, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, ready for policy, ready? Dr. Schmidt?
Good evening.
Evening.
So before we start on policy, I just wanted to just review how policies come to you. So they, I do submit through B.A., through E-Board for a policy review or they send me like legislative updates, which, which got guides, you know, what goes in the policy. So from there, I make the request to changes, I take it to the directors in Dr. Kelly's in that meeting. Sometimes we have a committee that meets after that and then it comes back to the directors and then he approves it before it comes to the board. So in this instance, with this policy, this is one of the times that we did have a side committee to meet. That was Dana Collins, Jennifer Popkin, Amy Denny and myself. And we met because there were some legislative changes, but then there also were some rest of changes by the directors. So this one is a policy for revision, IHS six grant requirements, and it does have a lot of revisions. But then we did strike through that we have essentials of healthcare that counts as two courses because we have more than that one course that counts as two. So social studies was changed from four to three units. And there was a statement added to clarify confusion. When a student transfers in or transfers out, there's a lot of confusion with economics and American government civics. So that statement was added in to clarify that confusion. And if you look at electives, it went from six to seven to reflect the social studies changes. We did strike through the warning units of credit since we are a strategic waiver system. And then part of legislative changes are under alternative diploma. So the statement was added in to, to how, you know, who the students that applies to. And then at the very bottom, you'll see the alternative diploma section, which is the new guidance from the legislatures. So overall, the total credits did not change. Are there any questions on this policy before we move on to the next one? So next we have JBC four, warning units and transferring credit. This is also a policy revision, these are first read policies. And we remove number three, excuse me, we do not house tests such as referenced in this in number three. And it's not good for academic educational crisis. So we did strike through that to remove it. That's the only change in that policy. Are there any questions on this policy?
So it's going to be required, so students are required to have three Carnegie units of, uh, social studies?
Back on IHS six. It's three, three units of social studies.
Previous files.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that would be to change the confusion of the economics of the American government. So if you look at electives, it went from six to seven because that's where the clarification comes in.
It was added back.
Or the, or the electives. So the overall credits didn't change at all.
Is that the, um, number of credits that are needed for, I know it's the number we need for graduation. Is that the number that is needed for like a four-year college university as well?
I think it's actually, Miss Denny could, could help. I think we actually require more credits than, like what the state requires.
George Law was watching twenty-three Carnegie units graduate. George only has one department, that's since the county comp zero, that there's just one department. So twenty-three units is what the state all requires. Because we have a block schedule and children have an opportunity to earn up to thirty-two unit, Carnegie units. Um, when we moved to the block schedule, we opted to move to twenty-six units, um, for the Wayne County graduation. So students who receive a diploma from Wayne County must have twenty-six Carnegie units.
Okay, and I guess I'm asking because of, you know, dealing with athletics and everything, the NCAA qualifications and stuff. For sometime, uh, they require more units or something like that in a specific area than the minimum requirements for graduation. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, the kids understand if there is a difference between ours and theirs, that they understand that.
I believe we're still under compliance for like NCAA.
Okay.
And it's, it's comparable to the other systems as well.
Okay.
But there is a lot of confusion with the transferring in and transferring out of that.
Right, okay, thanks.
So looking, looking back at JBC four, which was the next policy, were there any questions regarding units and transfer? You're just removing the one, paragraph number three.
So basically what you're saying is we're not going to allow them to prep a course?
We, we don't have those type of tests.
Right.
And they have to sit through the course to get the right answer.
I like that.
Okay, so next we'll look at K-NBA complaints about instructional materials. And this was a suggestion from G-SBA to remove the dependence on another policy. Are there any questions on this policy? Any questions?
Thank you. This is first reading, sir. Yes, this first reading will ask you to, uh, read and approve at the next meeting, yes, sir.
Dr. Kelly, and I probably could just, uh, email you. But I'd prefer some educators and parents to turn that we're not offering tech prep anymore. What I'd like is one to know, um, to, to make it explain that. You know, I'm trying to say, any of the sheriff's.
What can I say about?
Just that, that we're not leaving these kids behind. There is checks and balances right to make sure that, that we're teaching some tech prep stuff too.
That's a CTA pathway, they call them pathways basically now, am I correct, Ms. Denny?
Yes.
They call them pathways.
We have a robust, um, CTA program and students, many of our students complete more than one pathway.
Right.
I think publicly though, some confusion does come in because we used to have four different departments and there were different diploma seals. And actually that is part of the DOE reimagining plan. I brought you some information about that last year. And that is one of the components of Superintendent Woods', um, reimagining plan to begin, begin to look at going away from the one department to different types of departments. So I think you'll see movement on that statewide over the next few, over the course of the next few years.
That was more of, uh, I don't want to make it hard, that we're not leaving folks behind and.
Yes, sir. I, I think what we'll do is we'll, um, you know, Ms. Harrison was a CTA during the last three years. We'll have her, you know, or ask her a good presentation about how our current CTA program is incorporated into, you know, on the track that we have at high school and how, what kind of opportunities kids have for what we used to call tech prep.
Right.
Yes, we'll do that.
I, I just want to, Ms. Denny, just what year did we do away with the tech prep you mentioned that, that came on the way?
I believe it was, I believe it was two thousand eight.
I was still teaching.
Because the current graduation rule is based on students who. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine school.
This is why it was done, but, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons why it was done because it was locking, it was locking some of your college prep kids into just a college pathway. And they, uh, some of the things that were requiring, they could not take the technical stuff. And so some of them wanted to do some, wanted to do both, which you could get both seals, you know, and everything. But it was just, I guess they felt like it was simpler just to say, hey, look, we have these pathways available. We're concentrating on CTAE. You have kids that are taking college prep classes and, uh, trig and those things, but they may have a, a, a pathway for construction or they may have a pathway for, um, uh, for nursing, you know, whatever that is. So all students have an opportunity, uh, based on their interest to take, uh, technical courses if they so desire.
And many of our students are able to play all the pathways within the block schedule.
Yep.
Should we have lost skills back in my day, Coach Mack? He was my friend too. Alright, we'll move into executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the enforcement of permit, compensation, hiring, dispirate action, or dismissal. Our period of addition of a public officer or an interview applicant for the position of superintendent. Have a motion for executive session.
So move.
Move to the second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Ripdick?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Nicholas Ranger, Transportation. Classified Transfers, Amber Dickerson, Transportation Bus Driver to Magnum Secretary. Anthony Chad Mobley, James T. Bacon Care to Odom Elementary Spitfire. Classified Resignations, Melissa Hurst, James T. Bacon Care. London Johnson, Arthur Williams Middle School Care. Motion to Approve Assistant Tennis Recommendations as Presented.
Some of them.
Second.
Moving second.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Ripdick.
Yes ma'am.
What's that?
Uh, keep it short. See if I can use this big word right. We're in a pretty tumultuous society. But I hope everybody realizes that all of us have the same thing though. Whether you're a parent, whether you're a teacher, or whether you're a board of education member, we all have the same goal and that is for the safety of our children and our staff. That's paramount. We may differ on our ideas, but Ms. Wayne County must pull together and continue to make this a great place to live.
Um, I'd like to, uh, this time express condolences to, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Jennifer Mann-Michael. She was a former District Four, uh, school board representative and, um, uh, she lost her husband this, you know, past month after a lengthy illness. And I would like to let her know that, you know, it's their families and our prayers.
Uh, one thing I, I meant to ask earlier and, and I forgot about what do we do if we have a COVID positive in the home? And, and our, our procedure is if you have a positive case in the home, if you're not vaccinated, you have to quarantine. If you are vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine. So I was asked that question to clear up and I forgot to do it earlier. Uh, and also, I don't know if you know, most of you may know, but one of our secretaries, our secretary at North of Bucket, uh, Ms. Cassandra LaVale lost her husband yesterday afternoon. Uh, COVID ta- took him in just a matter of a few days. So, hope for that family as well.
Want to extend a great, uh, thank you to our staff for the opening of school. Heard nothing but glowing reports from, from, uh, parents and students as well. Thank you for all your hard work and, and weeks like this at Shakers. Thank you.
Same thing as Mr. Ray. Thank everybody for the hard work you're getting school back open. It was a fun first day. Um, had a good time with, um, getting the seniors to school. They got to do their parade. We did a different route. It was safe. We did have no wrecks for the first time. No wrecks, but they did a good job. Kids listened. They participated and followed the rules that we asked. The law enforcement, both the city and the sheriff's office participated, got that done. Dr. McDaniel and his staff did a good job of having a welcoming back committee and their parents lined the sides of the schools. It was a good time. They got graffiti and all that stuff. And then we cleaned it up and had school. So it was good. Open day. Uh, great visit from the governor and his staff. Definitely want to praise, uh, for the work that she does in the educational sector in the Capitol. Um, she did an outstanding job of helping, you know, our school be recognized. We appreciate the governor for coming to South Georgia, um, to share, um, with us in that time. Couldn't have chose, um, any other, other school districts. He has 181 to choose from, but he chose ours. So we definitely appreciate you for that. Um, thank Mr. Ellis for the hospitality. Staff there did an excellent job. And those module training units looked pretty good on the inside. I was really impressed with that. The air was working really good. So I think the kids have been taken care of. Uh, appreciate the work y'all do, you know, as we continue to do work. We are human. We make mistakes, but we correct them and we move forward to do a better job. Let me see it better again. That's all I have.
I mentioned a little more things, Jeff. Uh, on another sad note, some of you that's been around a while, Dr. Julian Rogers, that worked in our system for a good while. I got bored today and she passed away. But we send her a special, her family.
I just, I want to thank the board for your cur- your courage to serve. It is a very difficult position and, uh, noticed by members of, of the school system. Um, I want to thank all of our local leadership and our teachers for a great open house and two great, one, uh, two great days of, of school. I heard nothing but glowing reports for the first few days. And our kids are excited and we're very excited to, uh, get this school year underway and provide our kids every opportunity to be successful. So thank you guys very much.
With your back in the nation.